Good evening. How's everyone? It's so good to see a full house this evening. Could it be because School Five is performing? Could that be it? Okay, well, for whatever reason, it is so great to look out and see so many parents in the house. So I thank you so much. Now, one really brief, short, um, announcement before we begin the meeting. Once our wonderful students have performed, I would ask that the parents stay for about three minutes because we have a very special announcement. We will, you know, we don't want you to miss. Okay, are we all right with that? Okay, well then, welcome to the Winslow Township Board of Education's regular meeting. Today is Wednesday, December 11th, 2024. Public notice of this meeting was given to all board members and associates and notices dated August 30th, 2024, and December 2nd, 2024. Adequate and electronic notice of this public meeting has been provided specifying the time, place, and manner in which this meeting is being conducted. It is advertised in the Courier-Post, it was advertised in the Courier-Post, posted in all of our schools, the administration building, the municipal building, the library, the Baudeloupe Center, Edgewood Acres, Elm Town, and the Winslow Township post offices. And this, ladies and gentlemen, is our mission statement. The mission of the Winslow Township School District, a large, diverse, and growing community, is to educate all students to become independent, lifelong learners, critical thinkers, and caring and confident members of the community. The district, in partnership with the community and in the climate of cooperation and mutual respect, will provide an academic environment which values excellence and diversity, encourages students to strive for personal excellence, and assists them in acquiring the knowledge, the skills, and the attitudes necessary to contribute positively to a rapidly changing world. Roll call, please.
Mr. Askew.
Present.
Mr. Chester.
Present.
Ms. Dredden. Ms. Martin. Ms. Nieves. Ms. Peterson. Mr. Shaw.
Present.
Mr. Thomas.
Yes. Present.
And Ms. Pitts.
Present.
We have a call.
Thank you. Can we now stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands our nation under God, in the middle of the revolution. 2024, 2025, this is the student achievement, complete and complete best practice for delivering education for students. This shall include conduct with the administrative department, monitor curriculum learning, assistively review student assessment data, guide and direct teaching, continue to provide supplemental activities, i.e. current enrichment programs, which address student efficiency. Benchmark achievement for ninth grade math and language arts to create a safe and positive learning environment for students to have. Strictly enforce the difference. Student code project. Focus on upper elementary school students. Modify student behavior in early grades. Reinforce positive behavior in a specific and genuine way. Approach students with care. Respect and desire to students good and awful. Three, increase parent caregiving and community engagement and education. Provide opportunities for two-way communication and physical engagement. Continue with communication toward students. Focus on defining our communication method. Message to better market our school. Continue with our public relations with the community.
Thank you, Mr. Chester. Board members, I'm at the top of page two. Awards and presentations. At this time, board members, we will go to my right and sit over there so that our wonderful students can perform.
Dr. Carter. Can you introduce your, uh, school, please?
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Good evening, good evening. I'm Nathan Carter, I'm the principal of Winslow Township School Number Five. Joining me today, as you all know, um, are members of our band and orchestra. Um, this is actually a combined band and orchestra. Um, we have students here from School Number Five and School Number Six. Um, first, let me thank all of the parents for coming out on this rainy evening to make sure that your students arrived here. Um, they have been preparing for our upcoming winter concert, uh, which takes place on January 30th, actually at School Number Six. Um, they've been practicing every Wednesday. I know you've heard them practicing at home as well. They are under the direction of two absolutely phenomenal teachers, uh, Mrs. Nancy Jan and Mr. Tim Garten. Uh, Mrs. Jan is our orchestra teacher, Mr. Garten is our band teacher. And I, I say that they are phenomenal teachers because year in and year out, um, they enable our students to produce a quality of sound um, that does not, um, I'll say, no other elementary school band or orchestra that I've ever heard compares to them. Um, and, and I truly mean that. Year in and year out. So, now, I pumped you up, guys, you gotta, you gotta make it come to fruition, right? All right, so without further ado, I'm gonna turn the program over, uh, to our orchestra. Please join me in welcoming Mrs. Nancy Jan.
Thank you, Dr. Carter. You put us in a lot of pressure here. Um, wow, it's wonderful to see all of you here this evening. And, um, uh, the weather can be even more beautiful than this evening. Um, so, the orchestra, this is the advanced orchestra, consists of the fifth and sixth graders. Uh, we will be presenting two songs. Uh, same for the band, they will be presenting two songs. And we will begin with a piece, um, by Alex Dudley called Noble Blues. Noble Blues. Now, you're wondering, what does the, what is noble blues? The bow, so the string instrument, the violin, cello, viola, and the bass, they all have a, a viol, an instrument and a bow that complements it. So it's like two separate instruments. So all these students, they have to develop two separate skills, learning how to pluck on the violin or the viola and as well as using the bow. So that's very complicated task. However, this piece is called Noble Blues, meaning they only gonna be doing plucking without the bow. So you might think, oh, that's very easy, but actually it's not. It is very challenging to pluck together as a group, but you will hear it. So I hope you enjoy Noble Blues. The next song the orchestra will play for you is called Kwanzaa Celebration. Kwanzaa Celebration.
The last song that the band would like to do for you is titled Holiday. It's, uh, up on the house top, Jolly Old St. Nicholas. Um, Jingle Bells, and we wish you a Merry Christmas. We hope you enjoy.
Excellent job, boys and girls, ladies and gentlemen, that concludes our presentation for this evening. Thank you again.
It indicated earlier that, that there is an important announcement that certainly, and I'm gonna wait for all the board members to come and take their seats. And again, I would like to congratulate our students for their performance, especially the strings, because weather like this absolutely affects your string instrument and it makes it a little bit more difficult, but your sound was great. And to our band, Mr. Bandleader, your transition was very smooth. It really, really was. And I do know that we're all familiar with soccer moms and athletes, but let's give a round of applause for the moms of these performers also. And as we know, in sports, the coach is important, but believe me, a bandleader is just as important. He has to make sure that the rehearsals are there. He has to make sure that his children, his, uh, performances are on key and note. So thank you so very much. Thank you. I think you should stand up.
Uh, parents of all band and orchestra students, if you would please meet your children in the side hallway, um, anyone that is picking up your, your child to take home, if you can meet them out on the side hallway, you can exit through the doors to my right here, I'm proud. All right?
Thank you. Parents, just one minute and you'll, um, for this announcement. We'll just wait until the students exit and we just want to have your attention for, okay, maybe two minutes. Two minutes? Okay, maybe two minutes. Yeah. Yes. Right. Right, and also mention the parade.
Great job. Thank you very much.
Good evening, parents. May I have your attention for just a moment, please? I have some exciting news to share.
Parents, please, your attention just for two minutes because you're gonna want to hear this exciting news.
So I, I think most of you know that, uh, this, a couple of weeks ago, that, um, actually last that the high school football team won the Group Four New Jersey State Championship. So we are the New Jersey State Champions. So on this Saturday, we will have a parade of champions. And that will take place starting at CCU Church, all the way down to School Three. At, um, at the conclusion of the parade at School Three, will be an awards presentation, so we hope that you can attend. So the other really good news is, I can only share just a tidbit, but if you tune in to television tomorrow morning at nine o'clock, I promise you that there is a surprise for you and you will not be disappointed. I can't share all of the details, but it is definitely worth looking for. So can you kindly tune in tomorrow morning at nine o'clock to Fox 29? All right? Thank you very much.
Thank you, parents.
I can't tell you.
Boyle?
Yes, Madam President, we have two pieces of correspondence. Can you hear me?
Yes.
You can? All right. The first one is dated December 4th. It's from Kenneth Parker and it's addressed to, uh, Dr. Potteet. It reads, Dear H. Major Potteet, First, thank first, thank you for your continued service and leadership throughout the years. Congratulations to the, congratulations to the NJSIAA Group Four New Jersey State Champion, Winslow Township High School Eagles Football Team. Outstanding achievement, an amazing display of leadership, dedication, sacrifice, and perseverance. It's awesome to see faith, teamwork, and community engagement in full display. I am writing to inform you, I will be supporting the Winslow Eagles Football Booster Club with a nominal contribution in the amount of $2,000 to be paid incrementally. Winslow Township School District and the Winslow Township Community will always hold a very special place in my heart. In closing, thank you, Dr. Potteet, dedicated members of the Board of Education, Administration, faculty, staff, students, parents, guardians, community stakeholders, for your unwavering commitment to service and commitment to excellence. Sincerely, Kenneth J. Parker, Senior.
Thank you, Ms. Boyle.
The second piece of correspondence is dated December 9th, 2024. It's from Clyde Hughes to Ms. Cheryl Pitts. Ms. Pitts, on December 26th, frontrunnernewjersey.com will be naming Winslow Head Football Coach Bill Benton as one of our 2024 Newsmakers of the Year Award. FRNJ, which covers the Black and Latino communities in South Jersey, annually highlights people of color who have stood out over the past year because of their positive actions. We are looking forward to recognizing Coach Belton, and hope you are willing to join us in telling them congratulations. For $100, you can place a clickable 30-word line ad that will appear under your honorees entry. A clickable 512 by 512 pixel ad, which will appear under his or her entry for $200. Your contribution will also receive recognition by frontrunnernewjersey.com on our website and our social media outlets over the rest of December and throughout the month of January. If you are unfamiliar with our work, please click on, I'll read this line, HTTPS colon double backs slash frontrunnernewjersey.com, and see how we are covering your stories. Clyde Hughes from frontrunnernewjersey.com. And that concludes the correspondence for this evening.
Thank you, Ms. Boyle. Board members, at this time, we need to make a decision, as you heard, as to whether or not, with regards to the fact that this news outlet is going to honor our own coach, and as you heard, we can respond and to show our also appreciation in one of two ways, for $100 in, once it's published, there, we can do a 30-word complimentary sentence, or for $200, we can send them a picture with our logo, and also with some words under it. Now, I need to know, board members, whether you would, what is your desire? Would we want to send a $100 or a $200 ad? Comments?
Madam President, I do have a comment, but I wanted to know if I could address the first correspondence and then go to the second correspondence, in any order that you prefer.
Well, let's do this now. Since this is on the table now, let's, I would like us to make a decision on how indeed we're going to respond with regards to the request for Coach Belton, and then certainly, Mr. Thomas, we can go to your, to your second item.
Much appreciated.
Peterson moved that we purchase a $200 ad with a picture supporting the recognition of Coach Belton, who is also a graduate of Edgewood School System.
Second motion.
Okay, move by Ms. Peterson, the motion, and second by Mr. Shaw. Would there be any questions? All in favor? Any nays? So it's been approved. Thank you, board members, and therefore, Ms. Boyle, you can contact Mr. Hughes, because I think in the letter, he indicated this, we can contact him at least before December 26th. I think that's mentioned in the letter.
I don't see the deadline, but I'll reach out.
Okay. Thank you. Mr. Thomas?
Yes, thank you, Madam President. Just to piggyback on what Ms. Peterson was saying about the Edgewood grad, Mr. Kenny Parker also is an Edgewood grad.
Yes.
We, we wasn't, we wasn't in the graduating class, but, but he was a colleague or schoolmate of mine. And just to give you a background on how the athletic department and athletic committee have been trying to work together to foster that type of environment so we can get some, you know, some, some public dollars, some private dollars into support our athletics, athletics, and support our academics as well. And he was very instrumental in also doing the Hall of Fame. He made a sizable donation for that as well. And just to continue on what he's doing, he came with another endowment like that as well. And I had several conversations with a few other people because of what we're doing, not just in the athletic department, but in the educational department as well, are willing to make endowments. I would just ask and suggest that we have a mechanism in place to make sure that the, we need the endowments coming, that it's being accounted for, and put in a place where we can really track what's going on with them funders. And I also would add that we make sure we send Mr. Parker and any other person that comes in with that type of significant contribution, a, a, a thank you letter.
Very good recommendations, Mr. Thomas. Well taken, and I'm sure that that will not be difficult to do. And I think it would be most appropriate for us to do that. Okay? All right. Any, any other comments? Moving now, at this point, board members, I'm asking for a motion to approve our meeting minutes from our regular board meeting that was held Tuesday, November 26th, 2024, open session. Is there a motion? Move by Mr. Askew, second by Mr. Chester. Any comments or questions? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Mr. Askew?
Yes.
Mr. Chester?
Yes.
Ms. Redden? Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Ms. Nieves?
Yes.
Ms. Peterson?
Yes.
Mr. Shaw?
Yes.
Mr. Thomas?
Yes.
And Ms. Pitts?
I'm going to go back to Mr. Thomas. Mr. Thomas, I think you may want to recuse yourself from that, from the minutes of last meeting.
Please strike my previous comment, and I will recuse myself.
Thank you, Mr. Thomas.
And Ms. Pitts?
Yes.
Motion has carried.
Thank you, Ms. Boyle. Moving now, board members, to board committee reports. Would there be a report out of our athletic committee now? Mr. Thomas, you can make your comments now, or wait later in the agenda for information items?
I like to make, I like to read the statement. It goes apropos of what we're talking about.
Okay.
Dr. Quakamo just announced an environment of what's happening with our, our, our football team. And I just want to give an overview, not just the football team, but the whole athletic department, and how our athletic committee been working diligently, not just with the athletic department, but with the Booster Club, to foster that type of environment. And we just like to make a statement. We just feel like we, we, we should make a statement, and I'd just like to read it if I may.
Okay, Mr. Thomas?
Winslow Township Eagles State Championship. The Winslow Township High School Football Team has made history by capturing the state championship title. A monumental achievement that showcases their hard work, talent, and resilience. The team's outstanding performance has brought immense pride to Winslow Township, united the community in celebration of this significant milestone. A community celebration and parade to honor this achievement. Winslow Township is hosting a grand parade this Saturday. This event is a collaborative effort involving various groups of individuals, all coming together to recognize the success of the Eagles and the spirit of Winslow Township. The parade promised to be festive, community-wide, and celebration. Featuring Winslow Township High School Marching Band delivering electrifying musical performances, cheerleaders adding energy and enthusiasm with their routines, National Honor Society representing the academic accomplishments of Winslow Township, Winslow Youth Football highlighting the rising talent in the township, the Mollers, local community contributors, joining the celebration, Santa Claus bringing holiday cheer for families and children, dignitaries and officials, including Winslow Township Mayor Marie Lawrence, Camden County Commissioner Jeff Nash, Al Dyer, and representatives from Senator Norcross's office. Community spirit, Winslow winning together. Events like these, like this showcase Winslow Township's unique ability to rally around its youth and celebrate achievements as one community. From students to local leaders, every participant embodies the winning spirit that defines our township. The parade will not only celebrate the Eagles' success, but also reinforce the values of collaboration, pride, and support to make Winslow a model community unity. We invite all residents to join the parade festivities this Saturday to honor our state champions and continue building a winning Winslow Township. Together, we celebrate excellence, unity, and the incredible potential of our community. Go Eagles!
Thank you, Mr. Thomas. Very well stated. Moving now, board members, would there be a report out of the Citizens Advisory Committee?
No report at this time.
Thank you. Would there be a report out of our education committee?
Yes, Madam President.
Winslow Township School District Educational Committee Meeting Minutes, Tuesday, December 10th, 2024, on the district's WebEx. The education committee was called to order at 4:00 PM via district's WebEx. Board members present, Rita Martin and Julie Peterson, committee chair, administrative, Dr. Dorothy Quakamo, Assistant Superintendent and Education Committee liaison members. Discussion topics, 2024-25 Textbook Replacement New Curriculum. The district is currently examining language arts literacy programs for grades K through 12 for potential adoption during the 25-26 school year. Several math textbooks for middle and high school are being reviewed as well. School Staff Shortages. New Jersey Task Force Report. Initial recommendations from members of the Task Force on Public School Staff Shortages in New Jersey. The Task Force on Public School Staff Shortages in New Jersey has recommended several actions to address the educators' shortage, including competitive, competitive compensation, advocate for competitive compensation packages for educators, improving, improved working conditions, work to improve working conditions for educators, teacher preparation programs, partner with local colleges and universities to develop teacher programs that meet New Jersey's needs, mentoring, mentor and support aspiring educators from middle school on, remove recruitment obstacles, use administrative and legislative actions to remove obstacles to recruitment. The shortage of educators in New Jersey is a pressing issue that has left districts struggling to find enough candidates to fill teaching and support staff positions. Two, Winslow Township School District shortages. We currently have 21 vacancies, 11 in special ed, two in art, one each in gifted and talented, health and PE, learning disabilities teacher consultant, and school psychologists. C, Pine Land Environment Grant, School Three and Six. Only one school will be awarded the grant, and school number three has expressed interest. Student Safety and Traffic Patterns at School Number Three. This is an ongoing issue that must be addressed by the township. At one time, the township had a police officer in the area. The district has never funded crossing guards. Perhaps this is the task that the Citizen Advisory Committee would like to take on. And that concludes our report for the education committee.
Thank you, Ms. Martin. Board members, would there be any comments or questions with regards to our education report? Thank you. Moving now to our marketing committee, would there be a report out of our marketing committee?
I just wanted to note that the strategic plan that the marketing committee had been working on during our last meeting has been provided to the board members and is in your folders. Hopefully, that'll help the incoming marketing committee after reorg. And that's all.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Nieves. Moving now to our operations committee, would there be a report out of our operations committee? Thank you, Ms. Redden. At this, there was, there would be no report out of our policy committee, but stay tuned. Moving now, board members, I'm at the top of page three. I'm asking at this time for a motion to approve the superintendent's report as it begins at the top of page three, and then it continues through to the, or to the bottom of page seven. Is there a motion? Move by, move by Mr. Askew, second by Mr. Chester. Would there be any questions or comments? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Mr. Askew?
Yes.
Mr. Chester? Ms. Redden?
Yes.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Ms. Nieves?
Yes.
Ms. Peterson?
Yes.
Mr. Shaw?
Yes.
Mr. Thomas?
Yes.
And Ms. Pitts?
Yes.
Motion has carried.
Thank you. Moving now, board members, I'm asking, would there be a motion, hold on, to approve the Business Administrator Board Secretary's report as it begins at the top of page eight and continues through to the bottom of page 11? Is there a motion? Move by Mr. Askew, second by Mr. Chester. Would be, would there be any comments or questions?
Yes, Madam President, I do. Number one, this is a DEXO report. I know last year, we was having, I think, one of our findings was that we had some money that we could not spend.
Can you hold on for a minute and let us know what page you're referencing, Mr. Thomas?
Page eight.
Page eight, okay.
Beginning of the report, under six, letter A, number one, SDEXO report.
Okay. Thank you.
The question is, I know some time ago, we was having some concerns, not concerns, but it was good concerns, that we had money that was in abundance in that area. Is that under that report? And if so, what is the update on that particular situation?
Okay, the situation as it stands, and I believe that was from our '23 audit, that we had excess funding. We tried to go out to bid. Actually, we went out to bid for equipment. It came in very reasonable, and it cost our over it. This year, we are having, let me, oh, I'm sorry. It's kind of hard to look at you.
Yeah, I know, and that's why, yeah, we have to remember to speak directly into the mic, because again, that makes it much easier for folks who are streaming in to hear us.
Well, let's go back to this report. This report is not that. This is SDEXO just giving us an update as to where we are, what they accomplished during the first portion of the year. They do, in their contract, they do have a, an allowance or that they're supposed to make for us. They're reporting to you that they're on target to make that amount for us this year. As for that audit finding from the prior year, we will have that audit finding again this year because there's only certain things that you can purchase through food service fund, and you have to, depending on the size, you have to get approval. So as we go through and update equipment, since we have money, we're going through and updating equipment. At some point, if you bought everybody new tables, if you bought everybody new ovens, if you bought everybody freezers, there's only so much you can do. You, it has to be spent on food service. So, but we are on track again, because like I said, we put out a bid last year.
So, but we are on track again because, like I said, we put out a bid last year. Most of the equipment has come in, but I've looked at their fixed asset records. We still have some items that were purchased, and they're past their useful life, but they're running. And I said, it doesn't matter if it's got a 15-year useful life, and we're in year 16, 17, or 18, we need to replace it before it goes down. So there will be another bid going out, and like I said, we've purchased some cafeteria tables that were needed, so we're working on it.
Thank you.
Any further comments or questions as it relates to the Business Administrator Board Secretaries' report?
Yes, one question.
Ms. Peterson?
Page nine. Under Professional Development, number 12 and 13.
Okay.
Per diem base, $15.84. And that's from Union Township School District. And then one from Newark is 13, and the per diem base is 541. Is it just cheaper because Newark is closer than Union City?
No, they have a student, it's just, let's say this one. You said 12 and 13. Union has a student that's down here. They are riding our bus. So we take the cost of the bus, how many students are on that, divide it up, and that student gets charged back to the mic, $15.84 a day. As opposed to the one in Newark, they're riding a school bus. Our bus must have more students on it because their cost is only $5.41 per day. Thank you.
Okay. Any further questions with regards to the Business Administrator Board Secretaries' report? All right, hearing none, roll call, please.
Mr. Askew? Mr. Chester? Ms. Redden? Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Ms. Nieves?
Yes.
Ms. Peterson?
Yes.
Mr. Shaw?
Yes.
Mr. Thomas?
Yes.
And Ms. Pitts?
Yes.
Motion has carried.
Thank you, Ms. Bull. Moving now, board members, I'm at the top of page 12. Before I ask for any action on the Personnel Report, I would bring your attention to page 13. Page 13, item number A, where it says terminations. And we're going to, I'm sorry, item number five, where it says terminations. And we're going to remove that from our agenda because that has been resolved. So therefore, board members, at this time, I'm asking for a motion to approve our Personnel Report as it begins at the top of page 12 and continues through to the middle of page 13. Is there a motion? Move by Mr. Askew, second by Mr. Chester. Any further comments or questions? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Mr. Askew?
Yes.
Mr. Chester?
Yes.
Ms. Redden? Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Ms. Nieves?
Yes.
Ms. Peterson?
Yes.
Mr. Shaw?
Yes.
Mr. Thomas?
Yes.
And Ms. Pitts?
Yes.
Motion has carried.
Thank you, Ms. Bull. Moving now, board members, to that nice little pink sheet that we usually get, that is our addendum. So therefore, at this time, I'm asking for a motion to approve the Personnel Report as it appears on our addendum, beginning with page one and continuing through to the middle of page two. Is there a motion? Move by Mr. Askew, second by Mr. Chester. Would there be any further questions or comments? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Mr. Askew?
Yes.
Mr. Chester? Ms. Redden? Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Ms. Nieves?
Yes.
Ms. Peterson?
Yes.
Mr. Shaw?
Yes.
Mr. Thomas?
Yes.
And Ms. Pitts?
Yes.
Motion has carried.
Thank you, Ms. Bull. Moving now, board members. Still on the addendum, I'm asking for a motion to approve the Board Secretaries' report as it appears on page two and continues through to the bottom of page five. Is there a motion? Move by Mr. Askew, second by Mr. Chester. Any further comments or questions? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Mr. Askew?
Yes.
Mr. Chester? Ms. Redden? Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Ms. Nieves?
Yes.
Ms. Peterson?
Yes.
Mr. Shaw?
Yes.
Mr. Thomas?
Yes.
And Ms. Pitts?
Yes.
Motion has carried.
Thank you, Ms. Bull. Moving now, returning to our regular agenda. We're at the Open Public Records Act. Ms. Bull?
Yes, Madam President. Between the period of November 1st, 2024 and December 5th, 2024, we received and responded to two requests. The first one came from Mr. Joe Thomas. The request was for BOE policy concerning emails among board members. That was supplied. It was approved and supplied. The second request was the policy on the role of the solicitor in conflict of interest in non-public meetings. That was denied. No policy could be located.
Thank you, Ms. Bull. Moving now, board members, I'm at the top of page 14, informational items. Dr. Quakamo?
Madam President, I have one additional informational item. The board had requested that we take a look at our website and that we do something toward upgrading the website. So I'm happy to report that pretty soon, we will have a new face for our Facebook. I know that when we return from the Christmas holidays, that the website, the new website, will be live. Oh, yay. Thank you.
Does that conclude the information?
That concludes my information.
Thank you, Dr. Quakamo. Moving now, board members, to old business. Would there be any old business you would care to discuss at this time? Moving now to new business, and do I have to say our fabulous football team? Do I have to say that? No. But what I can, what I would like the board to know is that, again, as you heard Mr. Thomas state in his statement, that there will be a parade of champions Saturday. And it's the, it's as of the collective endeavors of our township mayor and governing body and the Winslow Township Board of Education. So therefore, as you also mentioned, the parade will be at 10 o'clock. However, I think there will be a stage there because there will be a brief presentation and award ceremony, and board members are expected to be on that stage. And as I indicated in earlier, text to board members, I need to know at this point how many of our board members will be in attendance so that we can make sure that we have the chair for you. And I did hear from Mr. Shaw. I know I heard from Mr. Shaw. I heard from Ms. Redden. So I do know that, is there any other board members who can let us know this evening that you'll be there Saturday?
Madam President, Ms. Martin.
Ms. Martin, thank you, Ms. Martin.
I will not be in attendance.
Not be in attendance, okay? Any others? I'm sorry, Mr. Askew? Mr. Askew? Thank you, Mr. Askew. Mr. Chester, thank you, Mr. Chester. Any other board members?
Madam President, I'm going to try my best to juggle two meetings. I am a presiding officer of one.
I am well aware, I am well aware of your schedule, Ms. Peterson. And certainly, it's going to be absolutely great that you're taking the time to step away. Okay. So if I'm counting correctly, Dr. Quakamo, one, two, three, four, five, six, myself, seven. We can count for seven. I did not, I did not overlook Mr. Thomas because Thomas, Mr. Thomas is one of the program coordinators. So without a doubt, we know that he'll be there. So, thank you, board members. Looking for a very exciting day on Saturday. Any, oh, with regards to the timing, board members, as was indicated, the parade starts at 10 o'clock. My advice would be certainly perhaps to get there by 10 o'clock because, of course, if you come later, the street is going to be blocked off because of the parade. At least this way, if you get there by 10 o'clock, you can be seated on stage, and you can see the parade as it comes past. So that would be my advice, but your schedule is your schedule, as long as you're there, at least by 10:45 because that's when we expect, that's the guestimate of when the brief program will begin. Any questions? No questions? Okay. Any other new business?
Madam President, I have, I have, I have a new business I want to ask a question.
Okay, Mr. Thomas?
I have several questions, but the one simple question that I'd like to know, as you can see, I've been trying to gain information. How should I gain information or items that I need answers to? What is the policy on that? And how can I make sure that I get the information that I'm asking questions for?
Now, information on policy issues or?
No, just, just, like, for instance, like, how many people, I asked a question, how many people want to be at the parade? Because the township is asking me so I can put chairs on it. So when I ask a question, different informational items, I need answers to it. It seems like when I'm asking these type of questions, I can't get answers. Maybe I'm asking wrong. Maybe I'm going about it the wrong way. I just want to be directed in the right way on how to get information that I need to carry on the things that have been assigned and how we can move, you know, certain projects forward.
That's certainly understandable, Mrs. Thomas. And the answer to that is this, as you know, you from the school board's position have been asked to be the program coordinator, and you are, have coupled up with Ms. Nikisha Cream from the township's position. So you are together. It's a joint endeavor. And hopefully, by Friday, now you can, of course, you already have communicated with Ms. Cream, but also with Dr. Quakamo. Because hopefully, by Friday, that's the point at which we're going to have the program and all of the pieces in place. So you can ask questions, of course, Dr. Quakamo and Ms. Cream because those, that would be your two points of information.
Can I ask that we have it by noon on Friday? Because Ms. Cream is waiting, I am transferring information to her, and that's the information that we need to know exactly how we're going to direct certain things for that event.
Okay.
By Friday, the stage will be in place
Right.
with the chairs.
Okay.
We need to know sooner than later
Okay.
how many people is going to be on that stage and just different questions.
Right.
So I won't have to Oprah and stuff like that.
Right, we'll have to, no, you would not, this is not an incident of Oprah-ing. As far as knowing exactly how many people, I spoke to the mayor this morning, and she's going to, also, she asked me how many of us, how many of us would be there. But to directly answer your question, the best answer to that would be to directly connect with Dr. Quakamo. Dr. Quakamo, are you okay with that?
I'm fine with that.
Okay. Mr. Thomas? It's a collective endeavor.
Thank you.
Okay, you're welcome. Any other new business?
Yeah, I just wanted to mention, I know we saw school five and six bands perform tonight. Last night, I had the pleasure of attending the middle school band who was here last night, and they performed as well. So it's a testament to both Ms. Jan and Mr. Garten on how well our band does. We had orchestra band and choir perform. It was a great performance. Kudos to the middle school administrative team who've now had two late nights as well as parent-teacher conferences going out, so shout out to them getting that done. The only comment that I would have on last night's performance is unfortunately, our choir was performing here without mics. So I don't know if that's something that we could look out because it was very hard. I was sitting front row, and unfortunately, I couldn't hear the choir performing last night. So that was my only commentary on that.
Now, Ms. Nieves, you said the choir was performing without mics?
Correct.
Is there anything that we can comment?
Ms. Pitts, I'm not aware of that. We didn't receive a request for the use of mics, so I'll have to follow up with Mr. Schropfryer.
Okay, all right. That's easy enough. We can make sure that that won't happen again.
Thank you, Dr. Quakamo.
Okay.
Madam President, could I have a question towards, in that lane too as well?
Sure.
I know, and first of all, let me apologize for missing the last board meeting. I charged it to my head and not to my heart.
Understandable.
But I know one of my questions that during then was that we were going to have a discussion on our internet capability and our technical assistance capability. It's been several times that when we have different stuff, whether it's the microphone or the internet or something that has to do under that technical apparatus is not working in the performance that can project our greatness to the public. I'm still suggest that we do have a discussion or workshop to see what can be done to fix that because we've been going on that for about two years now. So I'm just asking that we set aside some time for that process, that particular topic.
And that's understandable, and I'm sure Dr. Quakamo can respond to that. But let me just say one thing that I've noticed, and you see, right now, I'm holding the mic. One of the things I have learned, especially since we had our Camden School Board Association meeting last, actually, it was last week, we have to remember to speak into the mic. It's not always technology. It's not always the equipment. We have to remember to speak directly into the mic. So, Dr. Quakamo?
Yes, so some of the issues that we were having with the microphone, Mr. Thomas, is because they have come to the end of life. We already have replaced, I mean, have an order in to replace those, and we're just waiting for those microphones to arrive. We already have secured services for additional backup support, but of course, that takes time. But all of those things are already in the works.
Okay, thank you, Dr. Quakamo.
Sure.
Any other comments, board members?
Yes, Madam President.
Ms. Martin?
I would like to mention that on Saturday, December 7th, 2024, I attended the delicate assembly. There were seven resolutions that we took a look at and seven resolutions that were passed. There are many more. Some were pulled, some were changed. I did send an email to each board member stating that. There is one resolution in reference to the fact that there are many newspapers that are beginning to go away. And there is a question, or there was a question about being able to inform the public about the public meetings for the different school districts. So there was a resolution that was passed allowing us to do electronic. If we do have the luxury of having what we have, it's nice, but we can now do social media, as well as the school's website.
Okay, that's good to know, Ms. Martin. That's very good to know.
And also, I believe it was on either Monday or Tuesday, Governor Murphy signed into law A 3446 Freedom to Read Act. So I just wanted to make each of the board members aware of that. If you have any questions about the delicate assembly, as usual, you can always email me or call me.
Thank you, Ms. Martin.
No problem.
Oh, Ms. Redden? Thank you, Ms. Redden. And I concur. I believe Mr. Martin would also agree with that because the three of us wrote on that.
As well as, I would like to take this opportunity to publicly thank the A.D. for putting together all of that in a very short period of time. Kudos to her and her staff for doing a fantastic job, and I really wanted to do that publicly.
And that's Ms. Tashima Lane?
That is correct.
Thank you, Ms. Martin. Any other comments?
Yes, Madam President.
Yes, Ms. Peterson?
As we were at the stadium, I noticed that we had a tremendous amount of support from other school districts in our area. They were wearing their jackets. So kudos to the relationship we have built with other districts in Southern New Jersey. Our stadium side was almost filled. So I thank the relationship that we have built with other districts, that they would support our youth also.
Thank you, Ms. Peterson. Any other comments? Yes, Mr. Shaw?
Let's not forget how well the marching band and the cheerleaders performed, especially as cold and with the snow coming down in that stadium, because it got cold in that stadium.
Yes, it did. Thank you, Mr. Shaw. Any other comments? All right, moving now, excuse me. Mr. Chester? Now, Mr. Chester, that stipend would be coming, what, from the VA?
Yes.
Excellent. So, Dr. Clarkamo, as I see she's taking notes, so I'm sure that we will take action to move on that, uh, to, absolutely, that's, that is really good news to know. Thank you, Mr. Chester. Any other comments, any new business? Thank you, moving now, Mr. Long?
Thank you, Madam President. Uh, members of the board. The Winslow Township Board of Education highly values the input of citizens and making the important decisions that affect the children of our community. We believe in the rights of citizens to observe board meetings. To ensure that all of our citizens have the opportunity to attend school board meetings and offer comments, and to ensure that the board can conduct the important business of the district, we'd ask the speakers follow the following guidelines for making public comment. The board secretary will recognize those individuals in the audience who wish to make comment. Please respect the following procedures. One, all members of the public attending school board meetings must treat each other and the board with respect. Two, please state your full name and town of residence. Uh, your street and address number is no longer required. Please limit your comments to four minutes. Uh, in the event we're unable to answer your questions, please submit your questions to the Board of Ed with your name, address and telephone number where you can be contacted, and your questions will be answered within a reasonable period of time. And lastly, individuals offering citizen comment are not permitted to make personal attacks on any district employee, board member, other testifier, or member of the public. Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you, Mr. Long.
Board members, at this time, I'm asking for a motion to approve our moving into public comment. Moved by Mr. Askew, seconded by Mr. Chester, all in favor?
Aye.
Any nays? Thank you. Ms. Boyle?
Yes, Madam President, it's, looks like Devon Davis.
Good evening, board members.
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name is Devon Davis. I live in Adka. What brings me here tonight is I would like to schedule a executive meeting to revisit the excessive punishment that was given to my daughter. I have followed all protocols and procedures to bring me to this point that I'm standing here in front of you today. Friday, November 22nd, my daughter asks permission to go to a family member's house. I gave her that permission. At the end of the school day, 1:38 PM, she then got on her cousin's bus. She called me when she had reached the family member's house in P section, Ciclaville, to ensure me that I knew where she was and that she was safe. Approximately 3:30, 4 o'clock after school hours, my daughter and her friends was walking down Ciclaville Road when an adult male drove up to my daughter and her friends and said, "If you had any problem with my daughter, you can fight it out." At this time, my daughter was in front of Villanova Court on Ciclaville Road. As she then proceeded to walk away minutes after, my daughter turned around and mother and daughter was approaching aggressively. At this time, my daughter had no choice but to defend herself against a student that is three times her size. At 5 o'clock that day, my daughter was picked up and she had told me what had happened. Monday, November 25th, my daughter had a good day at school. Tuesday, November 26th, my wife had received a call from Ms. Gibson, ninth grade principal, to inform that my daughter is being suspended for 10 days for getting on the wrong bus and an additional 35 days for getting into a fight that occurred after hours in Ciclaville. That's a total of 45 days out of school, in which 35 days of that time would be alternate schooling, which means my daughter would be home on a Chromebook that the school provided. And I say this with respect. The Chromebooks are not update, not updated, and they barely work. And when COVID happened, kids were forced to do schooling on these Chromebooks that is hindering their learning curve because of the conditions they're in. When I came up to the school Wednesday, November 27th, I sat down with ninth grade principal Ms. Gibson and principal Ms. Mar, Marala to talk about the excessive punishment that was given to not both students, just my daughter, because of her getting on the wrong bus. I asked him about the matter. I was told parents came up to the school to report that my daughter and their daughter, which are both students of Winslow Township High School, had gotten into a fight and that my daughter would be suspended, and that he couldn't give me any other information because he said it's a police matter now. When I spoke to Officer Gunston, he had informed me that there would be no physical paperwork he could have given me to go to court with because it was a report and no charges, and no charges were filed to know exactly what had happened. Because first, it wasn't on school property, and secondly, not one staff member, teacher from Winslow Township High School was there to know or see exactly what had happened. And as noted in Winslow Township Guide Line Handbook, Section 5, Transportation, Bus Misconduct, First Offense 1 to 3, In-School Suspension. Second, 5 Days Bus Suspension. Third, 10 Days Suspension Off Bus. Fourth, Removal. It also states that the number of days out of school suspension would determine by the severity and frequency of the occurrences, and that bus drivers must check identification to ensure the students aren't getting on the wrong bus. To ensure that students aren't getting on the wrong bus, that's not being enforced by the bus driver because of the situation we have in front of us today. This is my daughter's first year in high school. She's an A.B. student. She loves art, modeling, gymnastics, track, and helping others.
Excuse me, Mr. Davis. Um, hopefully you're coming to the end because you have four minutes.
Okay.
Okay, because we need to respond to you.
Okay.
So you're at your four-minute mark. You're at your four-minute mark, so we, okay?
She's an A.B. student that loves art, modeling, gymnastic, track, and helping others. The impact of this punishment, the impact that this punishment has had on my daughter mentally, physically, and emotionally is traumatizing for any 14-year-old to go through, especially when this punishment that was handed down to my daughter could affect her future. And when I called to get help from a board member to see if there was a way to revisit this whole situation, I was talked to like I was a student and not a parent, which is very unprofessional and hurtful, in closing. I went to Winslow Township High School, and I loved it here. There was times I hopped on the wrong bus to go see my friends.
Now, hold it, Mr. Davis, I'm sorry, I really am sorry, but again.
I'm finished, I got 20 words to say.
20 words? 20 words.
I went to Winslow Township, I loved it here. There was times I hopped on the wrong bus to go see my friends, and there was times that I hopped on the wrong bus by mistake. But I wasn't punished to the max. And not once in high school, I recall, a teacher, staff, or board member that doesn't care about a student's education, and this punishment is affecting her education and possibly her future. So I'm asking the board to please revisit this punishment because I'm a firm believer in right or wrong. And when there are adults, especially parents, that encourage and ultimately need this fight happen for my child to be the only one punished, isn't right.
Mr. Davis, you've had your, Mr. Davis, no, Mr. Davis, I think we've been very, very fair with you. Okay? And so we would, um, and you want to respond, and I'll turn to you, Mr. Long will respond.
So one of our, one of our difficult things as a board, at these, these individuals who are elected to represent, um, the district, is that they're unable, in this public setting, to respond specifically to what you are, uh, stating here this evening.
Yes.
It's not because of lack of interest. Sometimes people perceive it as such. I can tell you, I, I know them all very well, and I'm sure they're concerned about your situation, but they, I cannot allow them to comment publicly while you can. We are not permitted to mention your family, your name, your child, anything like that.
Understand.
So there is an appeal process on long-term suspensions of 10 days or more, in which you can re, can appeal.
I've tried.
In an appropriate manner. It, you, you are legally entitled to a hearing before this board, under the law, for a long-term suspension. Must happen if you request it following the appropriate procedure. So I would encourage you to work up the chain of command, those, those.
I have.
Issues should, uh, go directly to.
I spoke with Ms. Clarkamo.
Dr. Clarkamo. And, and there should be, uh, an opportunity for you to, uh, appeal and appear before the board, which happens in closed session.
Yes.
Then there can be more of an open dialogue, but you definitely have that appeal right. I just want to make you aware of it. But the, the silence that you're going to hear after I stop talking, I don't want you to perceive that as lack of interest because that's not the case.
Understand.
They just taken out the, follow the law and they, and they, for the most part, they're pretty good at following it.
So, Mr. Long, I did speak with Mr. Davis, and I told Mr. Davis what he needed to do in order to appeal before the board. Uh, Mr. Davis, we did speak twice, and the last conversation we had, I said to you that you could write a letter and request a hearing before the board.
And you, you can.
That's not what was said on the phone, out of your words, with all due respect.
With, there's, Mr. Davis, there's not going to be a give and take.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
It's not a give and take, it's public comment period.
I understand.
I want you to understand clearly, send an email, send a letter, drop off a handwritten note, do whatever you want to do, you will get a hearing before this board.
I've done that. I've tried.
You've made your appeal?
You've submitted that request?
Yes, I'm, I'm here. I spoke with Ms. Clarkamo.
No, did you submit a written request?
Don't worry, I will send a request.
No, just shoot an email, send a request.
But this has been going on, and I've been getting no calls back, no nothing, no response.
Just follow your appeal and we'll get you where you need to be, sir. You just, just put it in writing, that's all I ask.
I have.
Should be in writing.
It is in writing.
Okay?
Thank you.
You're welcome, sir.
Ms. Boyle?
Jay Poe Hill. Good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening. Um, I want to start off by saying I agree. I'm super proud of the football team. They are shining a bright light on the township positively. I'm hoping that while celebrating the state championship team, I hope that there are some efforts in place to provide and support them with snacks and drinks free of charge in the coming season. I'm also wondering if funds for rings or jackets that could be used to give to the team, so those items would be, um, you know, less out of their pockets. I also want to plead for help with the topics on tonight's agenda, such as providing a respectful, social, emotional environment without retaliation. I'm asking for more professional accountability aligning with all the fancy job titles in the district. How would I be able to schedule a meeting with all board members to resolve matters that are unresolved and continuing despite attempts to have conversations with appropriate staff?
Ms. Poe Hill, as far as, uh, scheduling a meeting with the board members, as it relates to an issue that you may have with regards to your child, that is the role of the administration. Now, there is an appeal process, depending on your situation, where you can appeal it, and if at the end it be quite, it ends with a, um, a meeting with the school board, then that's, you followed the process. But just for the school board to say, in a situation like this, well, we, we meet with you, that is not our role, and Mr. Long will also comment on that.
Yeah, I, I would just also say that I, I don't know the specifics and it's not appropriate for us to respond to and inquire here, and I don't want to do that of you, ma'am, out of respect. Um, but it, it, under certain, under certain circumstances, the law is very clear and concise of when, when you do not get satisfaction from the administration, which is your first line of action.
Done.
Whether or not there is an appeal process.
An appeal to what?
For you to come before the board. So that, I don't know the specifics, and I'd be glad to speak to the administration about it, but some things do permit to go to the board, and some things by law, and at the superintendent, assistant superintendent level, and can go no further under the law because the board doesn't have any authority or power. They can only do what the, the, and enact the powers like long-term suspension, automatic board hearing, absolutely as a matter of law entitled to that. If you make that appeal request, some parents accept it.
Okay.
Some parents do not accept it.
Okay.
So whatever your situation is, I would strongly encourage you to follow the chain of command, it's teacher, principal, assistant superintendent.
Done. It's already done. So my question again tonight is now there are still more issues arising when it comes to my child, and now we're to a point where we are breaking the law because my child is being denied lunch.
See, I, 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 it's very difficult for me to respond or have a conversation with Dr. Clarkamo about that in public.
Are you, are you seeking a response from me, Mr. Long?
I'm not actually seeking one, Dr. Clarkamo, but if you cared to respond.
So I can tell you that the issues that Ms. Poe, uh, Poe Hill has do not fall under the jurisdiction of the board. These are administrative issues.
Not if my child is in school for a certain amount of hours and they're not eating, that is not correct.
The board cannot address those issues again, Ms. Poe Hill.
Well, I've already addressed them with the building principal, and they can't fix the issue either. And I've, you know, I've CC'd you on those emails as well.
Again, the board cannot address them. So with regard to copying me on the emails, you're absolutely correct. I have seen them. It's still a building level issue that has to be addressed by the building principal.
So I have to send my child to school and each day run the risk of them not eating, correct? That's what you're telling me?
Well, actually, I didn't say that, those were your words.
Okay, well, that's what I heard.
So, Ms. Poe Hill, if you want to have a meeting with me, all you have to do is to request that. And your emails, you simply are copying me on the emails that you are sending to the administration. I am aware of the administration's response back to your emails, and the fact that you do not agree with how the administration is handling those does not mean that they're not being addressed.
Well, they're not being addressed.
So, Ms. Poe Hill, if I would just make a statement, I would suggest that before you leave tonight, that you make an appointment to actually have a meeting with Dr. Clarkamo one-on-one.
I hear what you're saying, but I don't think you're understanding that each day... that each day that there is a delayed opening or an early dismissal, my child runs the risk of not eating lunch. So again, tomorrow, I'm going to have to worry about if my child is going to eat or not. So while I'll be scheduling a meeting with her, I still run the risk of him not eating.
Dr. Clarkamo, is there any situation which your child cannot eat?
For all of our early dismissals, the schedules are modified. All students still receive lunch.
Well, that's not what's happening, is what I'm saying.
Dr. Clarkamo would just make sure that the child receives lunch tomorrow until they can meet with you. Thank you, Dr. Clarkamo. Thank you very much.
The only reason he ate today is because I came there so he could get lunch.
Yeah, we would never want your child to go hungry during the school day. That's not acceptable by anybody. And that's why I asked Dr. Clarkamo to check on that, to make sure that that doesn't happen before you meet with her, and hopefully sooner rather than later.
Okay, I'll be at the next board meeting.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Boyle?
Madam President, that's all that have signed up this evening. Is there anybody in the waiting room? Not at this time.
Therefore, board members, at this time, I'm asking for a motion to adjourn public comments. Moved by Mr. Askew, seconded by Mr. Chester. All in favor?
Aye.
Any nays? Thank you, Mr. Long.
Thank you, Madam President. There is a need for an executive session in accordance with the requirements of the Open Public Meetings Act. We will be entering into an executive session on December 11th, 2024, at 8:31 P.M. Of the non-exceptions under the law, which permit us to exclude the public, it would be number one, which would be items which are confidential, and this deals with a child and the implications of a policy on that child. And the second would be, Item 7 would be matters relating to any pending or anticipated administrative hearings or litigation, and this would have to, I think, there's only one grievance left, Mr. Davis, or you're still going to bring up two, correct? You have, Mr. Davis has two grievances to just brief the board on, correct? That's what I understand. Thank you. So those two items, and I would anticipate that we would be in an executive session 30 to 45 minutes.
Thank you, Mr. Long. So therefore, board members, at this time, I'm asking for a motion to approve our moving into executive session. Moved by Mr. Askew, seconded by Mr. Chester. Roll call, please.
Mr. Askew? Mr. Chester? Ms. Dredon? Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Ms. Nieves?
Yes.
Ms. Peterson?
Yes.
Mr. Shaw?
Yes.
Mr. Thomas?
Yes.
And Ms. Fitz?
Yes.
Motion has carried.
Thank you, Ms. Boyle. At this point, board members, we're going to adjourn to an executive session.